Hey. For life.
Welcome to the Montgomery County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January 26th. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County. Will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bryce?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
County Engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We just have one resolution today. Resolution 21-74 is authorize that certain streets located in the springs and at the village of Winding Creek, Section 4, Washington Township are satisfactory for placement in the Washington Township Road System for maintenance, release of the subdividers contract, and reduce the existing letter of credit to the total of the 10% maintenance and sidewalk bonds.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Juvenile Court.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Juvenile Court, we have three authorization agreements through December 31st, 2021. Resolution 75 Sadler Neecamp Financial Services, Inc., DBA Soft Tech to provide software maintenance and extended warranty for the juvenile case management system in an amount not to exceed 130,880. Resolution 76 Montgomery County Educational Service Center to provide educational services and assessments through a school psychologist to juveniles involved with juvenile court schools in an amount not to exceed 27,000. And we have Resolution 77 Dr. Ninesh R. Patel, DBA, the Institute for Integrated Health Solutions, LLC, to oversee the delivery of healthcare services for youth at the juvenile courts detention services department in an amount not to exceed 36,000.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a late agenda item for the county prosecutor.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of the county prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr., we have Resolution 21-102. This is to authorize a payment by warrant to Private Investigations LLC in the amount of $3,312.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the clerk's office, we have approval of the minutes of the meeting on January 19th, 2021. Resolution 78 Approval of Bills. That list is available in the clerk's office. And Resolution 79 Accept the 2020 Annual Inventory for the Court of Appeals, Office of Management and Budget, and the Records Center and Archives.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We just have a handful of resolutions for your consideration today. The first is 21-80. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 81 authorizes a sole source purchase from Azteca Systems Incorporated for annual software maintenance and support for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $108,000. Resolution 82 was pulled and that number was vacated. Resolution 83 extends the price agreement with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated for waste container rental and disposal services for various county departments through June 30th of 2021. 84 authorizes a request for proposals for the virtual tour and education project for the Environmental Services Department. We do have one late item. That item is 103. This authorizes the purchase and installation from APG Office Furnishings for the furniture and installation of furniture for the Business Services Department in an amount not to exceed
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, if I could weigh in on the light item that Tyler just discussed, Resolution 103. This is also part of a grant agreement that we have with the Greater Western Ohio Workforce Investment Board, which Commissioner Lieberman sits at the top of. And it's also part of an investment with new furnishings that we will be doing in our new West Dayton Opportunity Center. This new job in Opportunity Center is going to be a great investment in waste state. And so I just wanted to weigh in and let you know that this is a partnership with us and the state to make continued investments in the Northwest Dayton corridor.
Right. Okay, Environmental Services, Matt?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have six resolutions for your consideration today. First is Resolution 85 Recognize Desert Nation Per Section 343.01 of the Ohio Revised Code to Receive Solid Waste Generated Within the North Central Ohio Solid Waste District at a Rate of $6 per Ton. Resolution 86, or the following three resolutions are to authorize agreements through December 31st, 2021. Resolution 86 with Bowser Warner for Consulting Services for Post-Closure Quarterly Inspections and Financial Assurance Adjustments at the Ash Monofil in the amount not to exceed $8,500. 87 with Egan and Associates Incorporated for Hydrogeologic Consulting Services Relative to Proposal and Cost Estimate Corrective Measures Plan Activities at the Ash Monofil at a Cost Not to Exceed $16,203. And Resolution 88 with Egan and Associates Incorporated for Hydrogeologic Consulting Services for Proposal and Cost Estimate Year 2021 Groundwater Services at the Ash Monofil at a Cost Not to Exceed $25,972. In the following two or two accept subdividers contracts. Resolution 89 Divided Ridge Associates Limited for the Washington Trade Development, Section 14. And Resolution 90 John Tomlinson for the Arrow Rock Avenue Water Main Extension Development.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
OMB, John?
Good afternoon. I have four resolutions for your consideration. 91 to authorize appropriation amendments. 92 authorize additional appropriations. 93 to authorize cash transfers. And 94 to authorize appropriation decreases.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Human Services, Tom?
Good afternoon. Under Human Services Planning and Development, our Resolution 95 will amend number 90-1090, 1049, by extending the term and authorizing an agreement with the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District for the preservation and supportive arts and cultural heritage in the amount of $800,000 through December 31st of 2021. Resolution 96 will authorize an agreement with the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District and Matthew T. Dunn to use the services of Mr. Dunn as the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District in an amount not to exceed $20,000 through December 31st of 2021. Then under the Department of Job and Family Services, Resolution 97 will authorize an agreement to provide eligibility, referral, and support services to Foundations Health Solutions, also known as FSH, with funding in actual amounts of 50% of expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31st of 2021. Resolution 98 will authorize a memorandum of understanding with Catholic Social Services for the purpose of administering the Refugee Social Services Program. I also have a late item, which is under Human Services Planning and Development. It is number 104. It will authorize an agreement with United Negro College Fund, Incorporated, for the administrative services to establish the 2021 Montgomery County Scholarship Program in an amount not to exceed $33,600.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Judy, I believe you just asked or announced me, so I'm going to go ahead and go. Under Workforce Development, 0099 authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Miami Valley Career Technology Center to provide Aspire classes at the Montgomery County Employment Opportunity Center effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, with an option to extend. And under Community Economic Development, we have 0100 approve an Economic Development Government Equity Edge Agreement with the City of Dayton for the Economy Linen and Tile Service, Inc. project in an amount not to exceed $300,000 or 2.9% of the total project cost, whichever is less.
I need to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did I miss Tom doing one here? Or you're finished, Tom? Okay, good. Sorry about that. Okay.
Commissioner.
How about Carl?
Commissioner, could I?
Introduce Carl Keith, our county auditor.
Okay.
Michael, did you want to say something before he spoke?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna do the introduction for you, but you did the introduction. So our county auditor, that's great.
He kept raising his hand. He kept raising his hand, so.
I thought I'd done something to offend you, Judy. I thought you, pardon me. I, whatever it is, forgive me. I'm sorry. But thank you for the opportunity to say a few, make a few comments today about dog licensing. I want to start off by saying we had a very special visitor in the auditor's office yesterday, several special visitors. We had folks come over from Dayton Children's Hospital, including their CEO and former county administrator Debbie Feldman was here, but they were here with their new facility dog, Millie, which is a canine, canine co-pilot, which is different than a service dog. So they, I didn't realize this, they have 22 service dogs already at Dayton Children's, but Millie is their first, what's called a canine co-pilot. And she just started, she just finished her training, and they brought her over so we could meet her and give her her official dog license yesterday. And was here to help promote a dog license season for us. And that's why I'm here, is to talk a little bit about dog license season and new development regarding the season. Of course, we're hot into the season, and we appreciate everyone who's purchased their license, and we appreciate all of our partners and our outpost, but we've just become aware of legislation that will extend the deadline for purchasing dog licenses. Judy, you mentioned, at the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned House Bill 404, which allowed, that the legislature passed back during the lame duck session in late September. And part of House Bill 404, not only did it set up virtual meetings like this, permit virtual meetings like this, but it also extended various deadlines and registration periods, licensing periods, and those types of things. We just became aware in the last week that that deadline extension also applies to dog licensing. So the deadline to purchase a dog license for 2021 without penalty is now July 1st of 2021. But we want to continue to encourage people to go ahead and purchase their license. We have sold about 34,000 licenses already, and about 21,000 of those have been purchased online. So while this deadline gives people some added time, and we know that sometimes people need just a little bit more time during the pandemic and the struggles that we've all been dealing with, it couldn't be easier or more convenient to purchase your dog license online. We've tried to make it as easy and fast and easy as possible, and so we want to encourage people to go ahead and do that. It's mcohio.org/dogs to purchase online. The outpost, as I mentioned, we have 19 outpost in the county. They will continue to sell licenses at those locations until February 1st, and they will stop selling after February 1st. So that opportunity will be gone, but you can continue to use our website. And as Commissioners know, this is important for our animal resource, our animal control activities, but I remember at our event when we announced the number one dog, I think it was Commissioner Lieberman who mentioned that last year the Animal Resource Center reunited about 800 dogs with their owners that had been lost. And that's the real, that's the real benefit here. If your dog gets lost or gets away from you, that's their ticket home. That's 800 families that were reunited with their pet. And so that's the important thing to keep in mind. And so I think the sooner people do that, the more they can be comfortable that their pets well protected and that they're doing the right thing. But the deadline has been extended in order to purchase a license without a penalty. Questions?
No, just, just thank you for what you and your office do. And you know, you bring up a great point. While it's extended, if you have a new dog that maybe doesn't, or you've never gotten it tagged before, better do it because, as I know, dogs like to roam and break out of their fence or their electric collar. And so it is, you said, it is their ticket home, Carl. So while we do have some extended time, which is great for many people right now, but let's just, if you can, I say do it now. We're just better off all around. I know I'm going to be getting my four here very soon, so. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I believe next up we have a hearing.
Yes.
On the Peters Pike and Lower Miamisburg Road Culvert Replacement Project.
Thank you, Commissioners. We, we, as you know, we had the viewing last week, and today's a hearing. So Joe Dur is our project manager, and it's likely just Joe and I will be the only ones speaking.
And Emily, I believe, thank you. Paul, I think that we have, no one still signed up to speak? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. If any member of the public is watching this and wants to speak at this hearing, there is a number available on the advertisement for this particular hearing. They should call that right away, and we will make sure that we get them in front of the commission. Having said that, Mr. Gruner and Mr. Dur, if you please raise your right hands. Gentlemen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Yes, I do.
Very good.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Joe, and he should be able to share his screen and make the presentation.
I appreciate it. Let's see here, Emily?
Yep.
All right. Can I get confirmation that everyone can see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So again, my name is Joseph Durham with the Montgomery County Engineers Office. This is the public hearing for the Peters Pike and Lower Miamisburg Culvert Replacement Project. The first structure, first culvert I'll talk about, Peters Pike, is located in Butler Township. It is roughly between Little York Road and I-70. Turning on an aerial and zooming in, work along Peters Pike will be about 200 feet in north-south, the culvert, however, it does cross under Peters Pike more toward the northern portion of it. The other culvert to be discussed today is on Lower Miamisburg Road. It is located west of the city of Miamisburg on a section of Lower Miamisburg, which also happens to carry Union Road. Turning on an aerial and going in a little bit, the work along Lower Miamisburg Road will only be about 50 feet in total. So scope of the project, Peters Pike is, we're going to replace the existing culvert, but we're going to put it back on a new alignment. And as part of the replacement, we're going to extend the structure on the east side, taking it out away from the road, provide some safety grading, and I'll show you further photos on that later. Lower Miamisburg Road, we are going to replace the existing culvert in kind, on the same alignment. It's just due to age. That one needs to be replaced. So starting with Peters Pike, this one has some condition issues regarding age, but also geometry. As you can see in the photo on the left, the culvert, this is the inlet channel. Water flows from your left to your right, hits that concrete wall, flows along the wall in the southerly direction, and then actually enters the culvert. And you could see the proximity of that wall to the edge, the traveled way, the white line, the edge line, where should a vehicle erroneously leave the road, become an errant vehicle, there's no shoulder to recover. So the proposed project will actually be placing the inlet of the new culvert off to the left in this entire area, which is currently a wall with the channel will be filled in with earth, providing that safety grading. Photo on the right is simply tucked down and taking a photo into the structure. This is a very hard structure to inspect, to look at, and due to the geometry and how it was built. Moving on, one reason is the photo on the left, you'll see an inlet, a catch basin here. This doesn't really serve any purpose for catching water. What it does, however, do is provide access for crews to get into the structure on the east, on the west side of the road. And this is important because as you can see in the photo on the left, where you see a gravel area, some localized failures to the structure have begun. Then also on, with the photo on the left, what we're showing is, what goes on in this area is, the structure goes from a single cell, one pipe that we saw on the photo previous, and actually converts to a twin cell structure, which is, you see the outlet of that twin cell structure on the right side. And this is, we're replacing all of this. This is why it's 200 feet worth of project, which you could see a lot of it was along the side of the road. We, we're going to replace it with a single cell structure, which reduces maintenance because obviously when we go from a single to a double, material can get fouled up on that little, the portion where you have the two structures adjoining each other. Then the Lower Miamisburg Culvert, again, is a replacement in kind, and that is strictly due to the physical condition of the existing pipe. These photos, it is hard to see, but on the right, you can see where the invert of the pipe has corroded away and is rusted, rusted and gone.
Up to the bottom.
Continuing with the Lower Miamisburg, the photo on the left is showing the inlet. And the photo on the left is what we're calling the outlet, the end of the project, is this existing catch basin. This is where the culvert stops being a public pipe and becomes a private pipe. And it's due to these physical geometry or conditions that it's our opinion that these structures have reached the end of their useful life and now require replacement. So going back up to the Peters Pike, there's one property that will be impacted as due to this project, and that is to obtain, we're extending the culvert outside of the clear zone to be able to install that safety grading. And by extending it out past the east side of the road, we will take it outside the existing standard highway easement. The, the area in green is showing new standard highway easement. In the area in blue is temporary easement. Temporary is just to be able to provide a contractor with the, with the area to build the project. The extension of the standard highway easement is to provide permanent easement for the newly extended structure. Getting a closer zoom in, you can see where the new structure will fall in, and then there will be one tree that needs to be removed, and that's for realignment of an existing roadside ditch. Some photos of the area that'll be impacted. So this standing on Peters Pike, photo on the left looking east, you can see the channel coming in, so the inlet will be out in that channel area. And then again, the photo on the right showing that existing inlet condition, which will essentially be eliminated and all filled in with earth, and therefore the safety grading. Then the Lower Miamisburg Road project, there'll be two parcels impacted on this one. Parcel 3, top left is Houston Parcel, and parcel on the right, parcel 2, is the Lutch Parcel. Again, green is indicating a perpetual easement, and the blue is showing temporary. So starting with parcel 2, with the Lutch Parcel, the existing structure at this location is complete within the existing highway easement. We just need some temporary for physical space to be able to build the project. And this is again, the Lutch Parcel, parcel 2, this is the catch basin, which will be replaced. And these bushes, unfortunately, due to their proximity to the excavation limits, the pipes roughly about 10 feet down, they will have to, they will be impacted and removed. Parcel 3, the Houston Parcel, is again, we're going to be requesting standard highway easement as indicated with the green. The existing structure is actually outside the existing standard highway easement. So one, we're replacing in kind, two, the green, we want to obviously have the structure in highway easement so we can maintain in the future and have the right to get in there. The existing area over top of the pipe at the Houston Parcel is a gravel berm area. So again, there's really no safety issue with the geometry of the existing structure. It's simply condition. Project costs, the design has been done in-house. County will be hiring a real estate, a state appraiser to determine costs of the standards as well as perpetual highway easements. And we estimate the construction cost to be roughly $200,000. Project schedule, design has been completed, and we are now entering the right-of-way phase. We will advertise and award the project with construction starting in September, and we would look to have work done by Thanksgiving. Both of these projects will require closures of the roadways, both Peters and Lower Miamisburg Road. Peters Pike will be closed for approximately four weeks, while Lower Miamisburg will be closed for approximately three weeks. Detour for Peters Pike will be along Stone Quarry Road, North Dixie, and Little York Road. And then the closure for Lower Miamisburg Road, which again, this section of Lower Miamisburg also carries Union Road. So we'll be catching, as if you're going northbound on Union, we'll catch you, we'll take you west on Lower Miamisburg, then north on Jamaica Road, then east on 725. And then for Union Road motorists, they would then turn left and continue north on Union. For Lower Miamisburg Road, there is, there will be signs that will catch eastbound motorists before they cross over on Jamaica. There will be a sign at the Jamaica Lower Miamisburg intersection that will take them north on Jamaica to 725, and then back south on Lower Miamisburg, or I'm sorry, back south on Union Road, back to Lower Miamisburg Road. So because there's two roads involved, detour gets a little more complicated. But all motors will have signs accordingly. And with that, if anyone has any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. Emily, you should have your screen back.
Well, I will move that we close the public hearing and determine that the project is needed, and the safety, convenience, and welfare for the traveling public requires the Peters Pike and the Lower Miamisburg Road Culvert Replacement Project in Butler and Miami Township. And recognize it is also necessary to facilitate the right of public, of the public to improvement and maintenance of and uninterrupted travel to county roads pursuant to Chapter 5553 of the Ohio Revised Code and authorize the county engineer to proceed with right-of-way negotiations.
You're on mute, Carolyn.
My second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Michael, did you have anything to add here at the end of the meeting?
I do, Commissioners. I have a couple of things. The first is the government deadline for the CARES Act funds to actually spend them was extended to December 31st, 2021. So it was December 31st, 2020, and it is now 2021. Now, we, doesn't mean we have any additional dollars. We are done on the distribution side. But what it does mean for those individuals that we did distribute dollars to, they have the additional time to get those money spent. We encourage you, if you have spent those dollars, to go ahead and turn in your closeout reports. And if you haven't, or if you turned out your closeout reports, and you have some unallowable expenditures, please contact the CARES Act Office, and you have additional time to get to get that done. Additionally, Montgomery County has been notified that they are the award recipient of additional federal assistance. This is non-CARES Act related. This is related to rental and energy assistance. We were working with the Office of Economic Development to distribute these funds, and they run parallel almost in relationship as far as standard to Community Economic Development Block Grant. We have almost $16 million to provide additional rental and energy assistance to our residents, and we will be spending the next two or three weeks working on that program to get that ready for rollout. This program will help a lot of our citizens and also help our landlords, who in some cases have went without rent for some time. So this is a great So this is a great opportunity for us to help as many citizens as we can. Commissioners?
Well, I definitely agree with you. I think it's a, it still won't be enough, but it's $16 million more than what we had. So that will definitely help those who we all know are so vulnerable right now to, the last thing we want is for more people to be homeless. So we welcome it and are, I mean, just grateful that we'll be able to help many families stay in place.
Michael, when do you think we'll be rolling out the rules for that and how that's going to work for people?
We're still working with Treasury on all of the guidance around there. It's quite the specific and detailed. We have to get outside providers because the new program is income eligible. So it's based on certain income different demographics. We have to do some level of case management. So it has a lot more strings attached to it than the CARES Act did. We'll be having to let contracts out with outside providers to help us with this. So to answer your question specifically, we are planning for the next three to four weeks, somewhere around the last week of February or March 1st, which will probably be the better date.
So if we can just get people to hang on just a little bit longer, we should be able to have it by March 1st. Okay.
Yes, Commissioner. That's, that is our plan.
Okay, great.
Great. Yep, that's great. That's really going to help so many of our citizens that are struggling, no question about it. But I also have some more good news. A pilot program that offers free grocery delivery with Dot's Market has been extended through February 28th. So we've got a little over a month. The residents who live in zip codes 45417, 45426, 45403 can have their groceries delivered for free on Mondays and Thursdays. Now residents should call, fax or email their orders before 11 o'clock on the same day as delivery. Now that phone number is 937-253-0263. That's 937-253-0263. Their fax number is 937-253-1057, 531057, which is the fax number, or just email homedelivery dot, I'm sorry, homedelivery@dotsmarket.com. It's all, all run together. Homedelivery@dotsmarket.com. Now, more information can be found at www dot dotsmarket dot com. This is a pilot program. It's being coordinated through Produce Perks and Public Health Dayton and Montgomery County using Ohio Department of Health CARES Act funding.
Wonderful.
That's great.
Good news.
Yep.
Well, I'll chime in. I want to also recognize one of our key partners, ADAMAS, which stands for Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services. And I believe, as we all know, the threat from COVID continues on, but so does unfortunately the opioid crisis. And the death rate from opioid overdoses really surged last year, very sad news, when the pandemic came to our community and it doesn't seem to be decreasing. So although we don't hear much about it, the COVID kind of gets all the limelight right now, or the highlights. The opioid crisis is still a huge crisis right here within the community. So I would love to reach out to anyone if you know someone who's suffering from drug addiction. I strongly urge them to seek out resources available through ADAMAS. And the website is mcaamhs. So it's Montgomery County Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services. They also have an app, which may be a little bit easier to remember, that's called, you can download it, and it's called Get Help Now, all one word, Get Help Now. So the, what I really want to emphasize it, that support is available right now. And they can, ADAMAS can help connect anyone in need of services, you know, or anyone you know or you hear about. We want them to get the services and the treatment they need so they can get through this. So please, please, please send them to mcaamhs.org. That's a lot to remember, but if you can remember Get Help Now, that'll definitely send you on your way. And so let's just keep emphasizing that a lot of people are hurting in lots of different ways. And certainly, this is an important one to connect people with services.
Carolyn, thanks for highlighting that. You know, you brought up a great point that it's kind of been buried in the news. And I just read yesterday that this past year, the, the country hit the highest rate of opioid deaths ever. So, you know, having an epidemic within a pandemic, it's just, it's just doubled. And, and so, you know, we have to continue to make sure that we're shining the light on on what's happening and making sure that families know where to go to get the resources to help their loved ones. So thanks for bringing that up. On a little bit more of a positive note, you know, we always talk about our great partners and the work that they do, and we couldn't do it without our partners. And one of our excellent partners is Dayton Metropolitan Library. And what we have done, our Family Assistance Division has expanded the number of staff working with our county shared services line that helps people with benefits like SNAP and other, you know, SNAP food assistance, can of cash assistance and Medicaid. And the, the libraries are now going to help us that. They are offering free Wi-Fi access in the parking lot to customers who currently have very limited access to the services within the Job Center. And so we've had that, the website open in our parking lots. And now we're, we are significantly expanding our outreach with the help of Dayton Metro Library. So more than 100 of library public service employees begin self-directed online training so that now they'll be able to help our citizens with the self-service portal. And you can see some of that up here on the screen. The portal you can get to at www.sspbenefits ohio.gov. And I know we've given a lot of websites out here today, but, but this is one, ohio.gov, you can connect through ssp.benefits ohio.gov. And very soon, people will have the ability to to get help at 18 of our Dayton Metro Library branches. And their outreach services team will now be prepared to assist also homebound library patrons on request. So we really thank Dayton Metro Library. You know, they've a long time been a resource for our citizens, but having them trained in this way is just excellent. A couple of other things I want to point out from the meeting. You know, we focus on them, but you know, I think it's worth repeating that despite COVID, things have been moving along. I mean, it seems like we've all been caught up in this, especially at the county, you know, with CARES dollars. But exciting things have been happening. And two of those I want to point out that were in the meeting is about the, and to, both of these are going to be on the west side of Dayton. You know, a place where we committed back last summer that we were going to continue to invest, but make, make a focused investment on it. So that our new Employment Opportunity Center at West Town, we're so excited about, but to now have partners, Miami Valley Core Tech and then Sinclair, those classes that are going to be provided there are just going to be wonderful. And then the other one is, is the Edge Grant that we just approved. And that's for Economy Linen, and you know, it's all over the papers last week. But that's exciting that Economy Linen is investing on the west side and will create many additional jobs. I think I read 70. So that's exciting too. And then one last thing. You know, our arts community has been hit so hard. You know, when, when you read about throughout the whole country, you know, who's been hit hardest by this? We know restaurants and small businesses, but our arts communities have just been devastated. And so one of the things, I know the three Commissioners are very proud that we are able to do one of the few counties in Ohio that does this. You know, we're able to continue to support arts and cultural heritage in Montgomery County. And this, this money certainly doesn't fill gaps that our, our arts organizations have, but it is so important to them. And it's important to us because it goes to our quality of life here in Montgomery County. And we hear time and time again from businesses that are considering locating here and then do. And, and that's one of the things that helps put us over the top is, is our arts and culture community. So I'm glad that we are even in the time and hard times that we're having right now that we're still able to commit. It was a commitment we made years ago. And so we're still able to give the arts community help. So I'm really happy about that.
Thank you. That was, you're 100% right, Debbie. We're very committed here to especially the arts here and, and just so many things here for our community. And before I say what our next meeting is, don't forget, everybody, come on. You know, we've lost some wonderful employees, quite frankly. And well, a lovely, lovely former city commissioner, Bootsy Neal, passed away this week. And she was just such a champion and a lover of the city of Dayton, and she died from COVID. And come on, everybody, this isn't too hard to wear. So please, please pay attention, wear your, wear face mask and wash your hands and, and social distance. So with that, our next Montgomery County Commission meeting is going to be Tuesday. Here we go, February 2nd, February 2nd at 1:30.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.